Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner. This is our Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, and I will start with a roll call of commission members. Matthew Bandle.
Present.
Robert Canto.
Here.
Rogia Afshar.
Present.
David St. Germain.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Scott Halston.
Here.
Our alternates, Bruce Polsky.
Here.
Mike Tucci is not here and not online, and Kyla Zimmerman is also does not appear here or online.
Okay.
And all set, sir?
Thank you very much. Well, welcome everybody to the December ninth Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. We'll jump right in with our legal notice, Liz, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid in-person and online public hearing on Monday, December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four at seven P. M. in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following applications. Matthew Yard for special permit for expanded home greater than twenty-four hundred square feet finished living area and thirty-two hundred square feet total area for reconstruction of single-family house at one hundred Red Oak Hill Road in an R thirty zone. Town of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission application for text amendment to the zoning regulation to add Article Two, Section eleven? I'm reading there, or is it? Oh, Section one, one dot A dot three. Conversion of an existing nursing or convalescent home into multifamily housing in the B. R. Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation in person is at one Montez Drive Town Hall Town Council Chambers or online. Participation is via the link to the meeting on the Town of Farmington's website. Copy of this proposal is online or available by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this twentieth day of November, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, Liz. Appreciate it. All right, we'll jump right into new business. The first item from B. N. R. Corporation, we're actually going to continue to the January thirteenth meeting, so if we can get a motion and a second to continue, please.
Like to make a motion to continue the site plan application by B. N. R. Corporation for outside storage of trailers, campers, construction equipment, and wood within fenced area to the rear of the building located at seventeen twenty-two New Britain Avenue, C. One Zone to the January thirteenth meeting.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And we've got a couple of applications to accept. Item number two from Bowdoin's Properties, Bowdoin's. Get a motion in a second, please.
Like to make a motion to accept the application for special permit by Bowdoin's Properties L. C. For special permit and site plan approval for construction of commercial contractor bay building located at one five six Brickyard Road, C. R. Zone, and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then item number three, City of Hartford.
Like to make a motion to accept the application by the City of Hartford for a special permit for improvement to Patterson Park, including new driveway and parking area, park support buildings, boardwalk, and picnic areas located at ninety-five Patterson Park Road, R. Twenty, R. Forty Zone, with a recommending hearing date of January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everybody. All right, on to our public hearings. We have three public hearings tonight. Just a bit on process for the commission and those listening in on the meeting and present in the room. So we'll first ask the applicant to present to the commission on their application. We'll then go through one by one and ask commissioner questions. At that point, we'll open it up to the public, either individuals in the room and then those online who wish to speak for or against the application. We do appreciate public comment. At the same time, we want to be respectful of everybody's time, and we ask that you limit comments to about five minutes per person. And it's okay if you agree with something somebody else has said to just say, I want to second or I agree with what the person before said. Again, we share these guidelines just to be respectful of everybody's time and appreciate those of you that are in attendance tonight, either in the room or online. So with that being said, our first public hearing is Matthew and Krista Yard application for special permit for expanded home greater than twenty-four hundred square feet finished living area and thirty-two hundred squeet toes. I can't talk tonight. Square feet total area at one hundred Red Oak Hill Road. Come on up.
How you doing?
Good, thanks.
I'm Matthew Yard. I'm the homeowner.
Okay.
Today, we're just really talking about the size of the home, I guess. Had a fire, so we're looking to rebuild the home and make it more feasible for the my three kids and stuff.
Okay.
So.
Right. Are you? So we've got the site plan up on the screen.
Yep.
Right, so you're expanding. Can you explain a little bit on the footprint of the home for the commission so they, I believe? Mr. Diggle had done this for you for the Z. B. A. Meeting, so the red is the existing house.
Yes.
Footprint, and the green is going to be the proposed house footprint. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, two-story home?
Yes.
Okay, this is the proposed home that you're looking to construct?
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
So the garage will be here on the left-hand side?
Left side, yep.
Okay, and it's a three-bay garage?
Yes.
Okay. And this is the first floor plan, so there's a family room, dining room, and study area with kitchen, so a square rectangle shape for your two-story colonial.
Yep.
And then on the second floor, okay, and your second floor goes out over the garage?
Yes.
They pull, so they, the second floor of the home is the full full footprint of the first floor included.
Right, the bedrooms and everything, yep.
Okay. And so we've got a master bedroom plus three other bedrooms. Is that correct? So four-bedroom total?
Yep.
And a game room or play area?
Correct.
Above. Okay. Anything else unique about the room that they, or the home, excuse me, that the commission should be aware of?
Uh, no, not, no.
Okay. You were before Zoning Board of Appeals in November, correct?
Yep.
And received approval? Correct, for the setback. So the for this area in front of the front yard setback.
Correct.
Because there's more of the home is in front of that setback.
Yeah, just with the lot, the way we have to work it.
Sure.
Yep.
And you've got a, the septic system is a new septic going in for this home, or is the existing septic system being used?
Existing.
Existing.
Yep.
Okay, so it was already a four-bedroom-ish?
Yeah, yeah, three, yeah, three.
It was three bedrooms, so now you're going to four?
Yep.
Okay, but there's no change to the septic system?
No.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chair, I think that gets the pertinent.
Appreciate that, Shannon.
Info on the record for you.
All right, so we'll turn it over to the commissioners for questions. We'll start with Matt.
Um, so I guess this is more for Shannon. So just confirming, we're exceeding the permitted as of right by a four hundred fifty feet roughly? Square feet?
Yeah, I'm just, I forgive me, because I'm gonna take a look at the math real quick. Yes, correct.
So I mean, it's, it is negligible, and it is in keeping with the characteristics of Dominique's Court, so no real questions, more of a statement. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Bob? Um. Yeah, I agree with Matt. You know, it fits the area quite well. I just have a couple of questions, and more for curiosity than anything. So I'm noticing that the footprint of the house is bigger, so you're putting in new foundation and all?
Yep.
You're demoing everything and starting from scratch, basically?
Yeah.
Okay, and that septic tank is going to be big enough? You already checked that or?
Checked it all out, yep.
And the leaching fields and all that?
Yep.
Yeah, no, I mean, looks good to me. Okay, thanks, Bob.
No questions for me. Thank you.
Liz?
This is, I guess, a question for Shannon. Dominique's Court is on which side? I forget. So.
It's on the south side. This home is almost, I think, directly opposite. I've got my bearings.
Okay.
Kind of right. Uh, no, sorry. Dominique's Court is on the other side, so this.
That's, okay, that's helpful. That's what I.
So here is a couple of windows open up here, because I gotta manage. Let's get the aerial on.
Okay.
So here's one hundred.
Hmm.
Red Oak. And up here, Dominique's is up off of Copper Mine.
Right.
Uh, you'll recall that the, the last version of the subdivision, there was the six lots, one, two, three, four, five, six lots off of Copper Mine, and then they also looped in one fourteen Red Oak, one fourteen Red Oak, the original property line to come back into here. And so we have got one fourteen Red Oak, and then it, as part of that, created one twelve Red Oak.
Okay.
So there, there, there had been two existing lots as part of Dominique's, one up on Copper Mine. This is that, the existing.
Okay.
Farmhouse that had been up.
Right.
Off of Copper Mine, and then one fourteen Red Oak. We'll say it roughly met in the middle for arguments sake and for conversation purposes here. So they reconfigured their subdivision to have six lots come in off of Dominique's, and then the two off of Red Oak, off its air driveway.
Okay.
Okay, and so this is, this one hundred, actually, a butts here up on the very northern portion. On this, the long stem of one hundred.
Along the.
And non-traditional shaped, that's the need for the, the variance.
Yep.
And is to push back. You can't in the septic systems. The existing septic field is in the back, I believe. And this is on well?
Yeah, yep.
On well, and the wells at the front?
Oh, no, it's behind it, but we have.
Separation.
Yeah, and it's going to be moved.
Okay. So it's being moved to where?
Right front corner.
Right. So it is, okay.
Yep.
So the existing, okay, so that, there you go. So the existing well was behind, but yes, so the new well is coming here to the right front corner, and then the septic behind. So as you come back on the lot, you don't have a lot of room to work with.
Yep.
And then meet all the other setback requirements.
Okay. Um. I, I think that's all my questions.
Okay, thanks, Liz.
Okay, thank you.
No, it seems to fit in with the size houses that are all nearby. It's a pretty good use of the very strangely shaped property. So no questions. Thank you.
Bruce?
Um, no questions, just a typographical notation. The letter from Nancy Perron specifies ten Red Oak. He also, just to make a notation to.
Correct. Yes, it was a typo as part of that acknowledgement by the town, because it is noted in the agenda review that the land is owned by the town. Ms. Yard and his family will, will own the home.
Mike?
No questions. I'm glad you and your family are okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think I, it seems to make sense for me, too. I don't have any particular questions. So anybody else have questions before I open up?
Nope.
To the public? Okay. So this is a public hearing. If there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak for or against this application, please come on up to the podium. Okay.
Okay, if anyone has called in on Zoom to offer comment for the public hearing for one hundred Red Oak Hill, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom, and you will be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone's called in for red one hundred Red Oak Hill Road, please use the feature in Zoom, and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Mr. Chair, there's no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions? One more, one more opportunity for commissioners before I close the public hearing. Okay. If I close the public hearing?
Okay.
Uh, any, or can we get a motion in a second, please?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that we accept, accept the application for a special permit by, made by Matthew and Krista Yard for an expanded home greater than twenty-four hundred square feet finished living area and thirty-two hundred square feet total area at one hundred Red Oak Hill Road in an R thirty zone.
Second.
Any discussion before we vote? Everybody's clear on what we're voting for? Everybody's good?
Good use.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Good luck.
All right, Jared, are you up? Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission application for text amendment to the zoning regulations.
Why not?
Be an easy motion.
All right. Good evening, everyone. How we doing?
Good evening. Good.
I'm just gonna apologize I'm getting over cold, so I have to pause a few times. All right. So I'm just gonna go over the same presentation as the last meeting, just for the record and as a refresh for everyone. So as part of a public act passed in this year's legislative, legislative session, Public Act twenty-four dash one forty-three, there's a provision. I'm sorry. I'm not going to read the whole title again, but under section three of the act, zoning regulations shall allow for the conversion of any nursing home into a multifamily housing by summary review in accordance with the terms of zoning regulation or regulations. In this case, summary review means able to be approved in accordance with the terms of the zoning regulations or regulations, and without requiring that a public hearing be held, a variance, special permit, or special exception be granted, or some other discretionary zoning action be taken other than a determination that a site plan is in conformance with applicable zoning regulations, that public health and safety will not be substantially impacted. So it kind of falls under that affordable housing, but there's no pub, public hearing permitted to be required. Just as a context for everyone, so we've got a, a number of nursing and convalescent homes in town. Touchpoints in Amberwoods. Touchpoints is at twenty Scott Swamp. Amberwoods is at four sixteen Colt Highway. They're both located in the Business Restricted Zone. Am, Arden Courts on South Road is in the R. Forty Zone, and the remaining Middle Woods, Farmington Station, Village Gate, Anthology, and Brookdale Gables are all in the Senior Active Adult Housing Zone, which would allow conversion anyway, as we allow multi, it's age restricted, but we allow multifamily. If it came to it, we'd have, we'd, if someone was looking to do something in that zone, might have to do an amendment to allow it if it was an existing nursing home. Most of these facilities are newer, with the oldest being Touchpoints and from nineteen seventy, and Amberwoods from nineteen sixty-six, so most of these are newer. We don't foresee that being an issue in the, in the near future. All right, so just to run through, most of the changes are in the R. D. M. Zone, the designed multiple residence zone, which is Article Two, Section Eight of the regulations. Under C. Development Standards Parking, the current requirement is that parking, uh, two and three tenths parking spaces shall be provided for each dwelling unit. We're gonna remove that, so that way it's not being referenced in two points, because you also asked for the parking in the parking regulation, section four, section eight, Article Four, Section Eight. So there's just a note saying parking shall conform to Article Four, Section Eight unless otherwise noted in this R. D. M. Section Eight. There's some waivers at the end of the regulation that I'll get into in a minute. Under Development Standards, there is a number of discretionary waivers. There is, there was a discretionary waiver already in the regulation. There was an additional waiver for conversion of a hotel that was adopted in two thousand and fifteen, but due to edits being done at the regulations at the time, it actually was never put into the regulation. We're also adding the caveat for nursing homes, so we decided to create a separate paragraph in this R. D. M. section, and then it lists one, you know, A, B, C, the different criteria. So it's discretionary waiver for rental housing. And then there's caveats for each one. The first is for properties up, I'm sorry, adjacent to the R. D. M., R. A., S. A., P. R., B. R., and B. One Zones, and at least fifty percent one-bedrooms. There's a waiver to increase the density up to six dwelling units per net acre, but not the ten bed, not more than ten bedrooms. Just adding a sentence for the purpose of the section, a studio should count as a one-bedroom, so that way it's all clarification. Parking a minimum of two spaces per two-bedroom dwelling unit may be provided. That, again, that's that parking waiver that we talked about earlier on. The next one is the renovation of existing hotel structures or, or change to use to apartments. Again, this was supposed to be in the regulations. It didn't get carried forward. We're just adding it in and moving it into a specific paragraph section. All right, and then the last waiver, where the site in question contains a nursing home, convalescent home, building constructed prior to the effective date of this regulation of whatever the date is. And the proposed units will consist of primarily studios and one-bedroom units. The commission may grant the following waivers. Density of up to eight units per net acre instead of bedrooms, it's just strict units, so one, one studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms. Grouping all units may be contained in existing, within a single existing building. If within a multiple building, spacing of thirty feet between buildings should be required. Again, most of these facilities are all one, one single building. Building height, maximum height of residences and clubhouses shall be thirty-five feet. All other buildings and structures shall not exceed fifteen feet in height. Rooftop units and vents shall be screened from view of adjacent roadways and properties. Again, this is something that's in the regulations already. Just putting it in this for, uh, to, as something to point to. Front yard and buffer area, parking installed prior to the effective date above, within the front or side yard, may remain. The commission may require that front yards be planted in accordance with specifications of an A or B buffer forty-foot width, which is found in your landscape regulations. And the commission may require the side or rear buffer areas be planted in accordance with the specifications of a B buffer thirty-five foot. Again, just to ask, you know, we're allowing you to keep the parking route, forcing you to, to remove it. It was pre-existing the regulations, but just asking for some increased landscaping as you're changing the use. Again, this goes back to the, the changing the parking so that it's consistent, and then offering some leniences for studios. So for the R. D. M. Zone, it was originally two and three-tenth spaces per unit, no matter the number of bedrooms. We're adding for a studio, one and a half spaces per unit, a one-bedroom, two spaces, and for a two-bedroom, two and three-tenth spaces. Again, if there's, if there's that waiver that reduces that to two, that would then take precedence over this section. All right, and the last is the new one for this meeting, which is the B. R. Zone text amendment. And it's just listing under Article Two, Section eleven, the Business Restricted Zone permitted uses, so this is uses that don't require public hearing. Conversion of an existing nursing or convalescent home into multifamily housing constructed prior to the effective date of the regulation in accordance with Public Act twenty-four dash one forty-three, Section Three. Such conversion shall comply with requirements found within the R. D. M. Zone. And again, that's just referencing back to standards that the proposal can be reviewed against for conformance with the regulations. There's just a little asterisk in this section. The Public Act has not been incorporated into the general statutes yet. Staff has a number of text edits that we'll be doing in, in the future. And at that time, we'll change it from referencing the Public Act to referencing a specific state statute. We did submit these text amendments to Capital Region Council Governments and the Nagatuck Valley Council Governments, because the R. D. M. and B. R. Zone's a but Bristol, which is part of that, and we've gotten favorable reviews from both of them, so there's no concern there. Any questions?
Thanks, Chair.
I know it's a lot. I'm sorry.
All right. Matt?
No questions.
It's not gonna be this easy, Bob.
Great presentation.
No questions for me.
Wow. Liz?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna spoil it.
That's fine.
No. So essentially, basically, we're just saying that if someone comes, has a nursing home, and they wanna convert it, they can, keeping it basically within the same structure. They can't tear everything.
Yes, so, yeah, so in the Public Act, it specifically says the, the building will not be torn down, and there's not significant expansion. I don't remember the wording. Basically, you have to use the existing building. You can't come in, tear down the building, build a new building with whatever you want. You can't add on to the side of the building as much as you want. It basically has to be within the same footprint. There's a question of whether you could go vertically or not, that we'd have to cut, cross that bridge when we got, when we got there, but the, the, the way it's phrased is no major exterior changes. And there is also a caveat that has to be vacant for at least ninety days before you proceed with any application, so someone couldn't just walk in tomorrow with a function nursing home, say, we're gonna close it down, turn it to apartments. That's not how that would work.
Okay, and this is a kind of obscure question. Where'd we come with two point three?
That's what's been in the regulations.
So that, is that town regulations or state?
Yes, that's a town regulation.
Yes.
Yeah, in.
Probably statistical.
Yeah.
From, from demand, after parking study demand, so whether it was originate, originated with something like the Institute of Transportation Engineers parking studies, or perhaps even more local studies, but that's typically when you start to see something like that, that fractions, it's typically based on some statistical study that someone did at the time that, that led to that.
Okay, just curious.
And some of the developments in the R. D. M. Zone do have three and four-bedroom units, so that could be the reasoning that they just rounded it out for that.
And the requirements for what the constitutes the convalescent home and what they can and can't do are up on the screen. This was included in the packet provided to the commission and.
Thank you.
The nursing home, in order to be subject only to summary review provided, the nursing home is a freestanding structure. Such nursing home is not a non-conforming use. Such conversion does not result in the substantial alteration of the footprint of the structure. Such conversion does not result in the total demolition of the structure. And the owner of such nursing home has declared in writing to the municipality that the nursing home has been vacant for a period of not less than ninety days.
Okay.
So those are some of the parameters from C. G. S. standpoint that we will follow and use as benchmarks moving forward.
Okay. Great, thank you very much. Great presence. Thanks for pulling it all together for us.
Dave?
I think just very quickly, when they make the change, when they change the Public Act or whatever, when they make those changes, we're not gonna do anything then, right?
We'll have a text amendment, just because it's changing the actual text, but it'll be, it's, it's fairly minor, and it'll be clumped together with some other contextual changes that, that staff has, has been working on for the regulations.
All right, that's it. Thanks.
Bruce?
Again, my question isn't actually related to the, the specifics of the amendment, but I noticed our fees are from two thousand and fifteen, and we're heading into two thousand and twenty-five. Strikes me that we should look at updating those, and this may not be the time to do that or the forum, but I was just curious as to what that process is, seeing as they're getting pretty old.
Uh, the fees, our application fees, we can certainly look into that and see. I'm not sure if we have sole jurisdiction over that, or if that's in concert with the Town Council. So.
Didn't we do that over the summer?
No, we had looked at adding a linkage fee into the building as part of the affordable housing, which would be a whole separate, we, we, we'd had those discussions, and the information is on our part of that affordable housing SharePoint page.
Right, right.
With the folks, but no, we did not formally make any changes to any of the fees.
So maybe that's something we can, you know, look at in first quarter next year or something?
Sure, we can look into how we compare. Typically, what we do is look at how we compare to the other adjoining municipalities, just from a reference standpoint. So we can start there, and then if it seems that we're off substantially, then we can certainly then put forth a request to Town Council.
Okay, all right. Sorry for that.
No, no, that's fine, but you're fine with the, you're fine with the text amendment, nothing with the text.
I am fine with the text.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have another left-field question.
No problem.
Do group homes count as convalesced, convalescent homes, or is that?
No, there, there's a, there's a definition in the state statutes for nursing and convalescent homes.
Okay.
Um, and group, group homes, it has their own carve-outs in the state statute for zoning regulations. There's a limit. There, there's a certain threshold where you can't regulate it any differently than our single-family residents, anyway. I don't, I think it's six or eight people. But there, there's a, there's a threshold in the Connecticut General Statutes for zoning regulations that says zoning regulations cannot regulate group homes with a certain amount of people, and I don't, again, I don't remember it off the top of my head.
Thank you.
But it wouldn't fall under this.
Okay, thanks.
All right, just to make sure I have the full grasp on this thing. Liz's question helped. All the questions helped, but so if, if an application comes before this commission with one of the nursing homes in town, we're treating that more like it's an affordable housing application, and that it's only a safety or health?
Right, you'd have to have, you'd have to have a pretty strong, the, the onus is on the commission to prove that it would be a detriment to the community as opposed to the applicant making that case to the commission.
Okay, and it's a site plan application, no public hearing.
Correct.
Okay, and it's a site plan application, no public hearing, just again, making sure I'm on the same page.
As long as it falls under those parameters of no exterior change, no exterior changes to demolition of the building.
So one thing, and maybe I'm overreacting to this, but one thing that makes me nervous is this height thing. And that maybe is some PTSD from other years of meetings, but. If somebody came in and wanted to go up another, you know, floor or whatever, given those. Potential constraints on. How much we can push back, does that put us in an awkward?
They'd still be governed by the density. So the height, yeah, the height is the height. In all the regulations, I mean, it's pretty, we're pretty consistent with the maximum building height.
Okay.
It would be, the density would be the biggest governing factor, because a lot of these properties do not. Have a lot of excess land. And usually the land that they have is wetlands, which, which we only count seventy-five percent of the wetlands as usable area. So there's a caveat in the RDM regulations for wetlands and steep slopes, so there, there's, it's not, if you've got ten acres, you get eighty units, you gotta have ten acres of usable land.
Right.
So there's certain restrictions already in that regulation to kind of make sure that everything scales right.
All right, and we're capped at thirty-five feet. Yeah, there was a.
Yeah.
Thirty-five feet in the regulation too, thanks, thanks for a reminder, Bob. Yeah, that, that helps.
Thirty-five feet for the primary building, and if they wanted to add, add a clubhouse, it'd be fifteen feet.
Okay.
Which is what, what we have for sheds too.
Okay, now I appreciate that. Anybody else think of another question? All right, well, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody in the room that would like to speak for or against this application. Come on up. Shannon, online?
If anyone's called in to offer comment regarding. And Mr. Chair, if I will, for point of clarification, we've combined the presentation for both public hearings, two and three, so the continuation of public hearing. Two and the new public hearing three, which was section eleven A three, the B R zone. So if anyone has called in to offer comment on either public hearing item two or three, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. And you will be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone's called in for either of the text amendments to the RDM parking. Or the B R zone, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. Mr. Chair, there are no hands raised.
Okay, thanks, Shannon, and so we need to have motions and vote on these separately, correct?
Yes, please, because they technically came in as separate applications.
Okay.
Because of sequencing, as we discussed at the. So yes, each one should be voted on separately.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions for Garrett before we? Close the public hearing?
I'll just note, we're gonna set the effective date, assuming the vote is in the affirmative, the effective date is sixteen days after the date of the legal notice.
Okay. Thanks, Shannon. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing, can we get a motion in a second, please, for item number two?
Sure. I move that we accept the application for text amendment from the Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission. For text amendment to the zoning regulations revising Article two, section eight. RDM and Article four, section eight B three, schedule of off-street parking in the RDM zone.
Second. All right, any discussion? Thoughts, questions, no questions at this point, but. Everybody's good?
No.
All we're voting on, all good?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor? I opposed. Abstentions, motion passes. All right, item number three, can we get a motion in a second, please?
I move that we accept the application by a town of, I'm sorry. Prove, oh, approve the application, excuse me, approve the application. By the Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission for the text amendment to the zoning regulations to add Article two, section eleven A three. Conversion of an existing nursing or convalescent home into multifamily housing in the B R zone.
Second.
Same question, everybody good here, and those know what we're voting on, any discussion? Want to vote, okay. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed. Abstentions, motion passes. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Garrett, for.
Yeah, thank you, Garrett, that was.
Making it.
For your illness.
Yes. Persevering, thank you. And to everyone in the office.
All right, Shannon?
I've got just a handful of quick. Planner's report items for you folks, so the first are. Mostly sign related, so the first two have to do with Starbucks Naples Plaza, and these happen to be the. Wall signs for Naples and Fork and Fire. So. These, you'll recall, they were. As part of the original approval, when we looked at the exterior elevations. For this building, they had signed banners or panels that were incorporated into. The elevation, but the specific signs were not included, and the note was that they had to come. Before the commission, and they need a building permit for the install, because there's separate attachments, physical attachments to the building. So. This was the architectural rendering that was provided, you can see where the Fork and Fire panel was, and then the. Naples panel is here on this, this end on the right-hand side of the building. And, and this is what the Naples will look like, twenty-two and a half square feet. There are pin mounted letters into the facade. And then this is a wall sign panel that will go up into the. The shed, dormer that was provided for the signs. So unless there is, the lighting will match, there's the light bar that was included in the elevations. I'm sure most of you have seen these, because some of these are up already, so. Light bar, there's no change to the light bar. Colors will be as shown on the elevations. Unless the commission feels otherwise, I was going to have this go direct to building permit and not require formal. Any other type of formal review and application with the commission.
Such an improvement, Shannon, the whole plaza. Not just the signage, but the whole thing is just much needed.
Working lot, everything is really.
They really did a nice job. This is a sign again, this is the former Design Forum, next to Modern Tire, just down the street, just west of.
Try it again.
The, of our Naples and Fork and Fire Plaza, just over the river, and so. Designed Forum is now going to be curated jewelry, gifts, home decor. And for right now, it'll say Anne Moore, because the cafe is not permitted at this point in time. So they're gonna put a patch over that, and then should they choose to proceed with the cafe, then, which will require a conversation with the commission, most likely. Then we'll, we'll go that route when the time comes, but for now, and this is a vinyl applique over the existing sign panel that's there. So no change, there's two lights that are mounted from the eve that come up. Out past the eve and shine onto the sign. So again, unless there's a concern with the commission, was going to have this move ahead.
Looks good.
And the final, final one, I don't have a, a picture of, it's Sally's Apisa. At West Farms Mall, you may recall Sally's is the subtenant to Jordan's.
Yeah.
I think we already talked about their signs too already. One final item for Sally's was their liquor permit. And our liquor regulation is Article four, section five. For any alcohol, there's a portion that discusses alcohol consumption premise, and then alcohol to be purchased to be consumed off premise at home. So the on-premise, there's parameters of so many restaurants within X number of feet of one another, et cetera. So what we did is we went through and polled all the prior alcohol permits for West Farms, there were. Five granted originally in nineteen seventy-four. Like I've got that right, in nineteen seventy-four, and then two more granted in nineteen ninety-five to Nordstrom's, when their cafes went in, in place, so. So there were seven total, there are three currently being used, one of which is Nordstrom's. So we have allocated one of the spares to Sally's, and that still gives them three extra. If I've got my math right, and then they, they can just proceed without, otherwise it would have required a public hearing with the, if we didn't have enough. And it required a public hearing, which. Seemed unnecessary, so we were, we thankfully persevered, found the total number that had been granted, we now have a catalog of that. A running tally moving forward, and we should be all set, so I went ahead and signed that liquor permit so that they could proceed, because then they've got. The usual sign postings that we see every so often with the state, state board will have to be posted out at the property. Once that application's accepted, so, so it's really more of an apply for you folks, so you know. Okay.
So, so liquor permits stay with the establishment or?
Well, from a, from a zoning standpoint, not a state standpoint.
Okay.
So from our zoning standpoint, we, I was looking at it as they had been granted, so in seventy-four when they opened, and they didn't know exactly. Which users were going to have a liquor permit or how many restaurants? And you gotta keep in mind too, this is only on the Farmington side, it doesn't include the West offering.
Oh, that's right.
Rios and PF Chang's. Not ours.
Oh, okay.
Right?
It was one of them.
So it's Texas Day Brazil. California Pizza Kitchen and Nordstrom's Cafe are the current three.
That is.
Yeah, so, because we can only, from a zoning standpoint, regulate our side of the line, as well as building and other things, so it's a whole nother. We've got that all figured out. So no, we, we, I was looking at it from a total, from a zoning standpoint, but yes, from a state liquor license. They've gotta go.
Every new owner, new.
But given the fact that they had seven and they're only using three of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, makes sense, I just was.
I didn't, yeah, so. Technically, it's a special permit, so it would run with the property, so that, no different than any other special permits that runs with the property, and then. If it's reality, if they put all seven all in one corner. Okay, if they're spread out among the store, the portion that's in Farmington, then that's fine too, but this, it's no different really than any other special permit, it runs with the property.
Yeah, it was just a little, I was, hadn't seen liquor permits come up, I didn't think it was in our.
It doesn't very often. So, and typically, it's, it's, it's some place that's taking over. A former restaurant space that already had a liquor, like, this process had already taken place, so.
Okay.
Which, as it turns out, had in this one as well.
So do we know a time when they're gonna open?
I don't have that, I think with the state permitting process, it's either, it's a thirty or sixty day.
Okay.
Public comment period, so I think we're still a bit out, although there are some places that will open prior to having their full liquor license, so. But no, I think we're a little bit out on this.
Okay.
Next year.
In the spring, pizza in the spring.
There you go, absolutely. So that's all I have this evening for Planner's Report, unless anyone has any other question, just trying to think of any other questions. Gonna quiz, this is the quiz, Shannon.
Upper Shannon portion of the meeting.
What's happening, what's going on? Anything interesting?
Got that at pretty much every cocktail party for the holiday.
Yes, very liquid. Yes, the gas station's gone, yeah.
Yes, the gas.
That gas station is the three sixty-eight Plainville Avenue, we're going vertical, we got tanks in the ground. The canopy foundation has been poured. So, and the electrical now is being run from building to canopy as needed for. Tanks and fuel pumps, et cetera. So that's going, and then the other gas station at five corners is completely demoed, so in case you're not over in that area in the Rebel Dog area, that's. Wrong.
Looks so much better.
Yes. People, a friend I work with, she's like, cannot wait to have something there. Like, just something to get to.
I agree.
It is a bit of a desert over in that area.
In keeping with the quiz Shannon part of the program. The blasting that they were gonna do on Route six, I don't think they've done that yet, have they?
Correct, now for the storage facility.
But they were talking about doing it in November, so they're behind their, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't, so from a special permit standpoint, they're really. Yes, that's what they discussed conversationally during the meeting, but they're not necessarily held to that, we will require. Their blaster has to come in and spill out, fill out specific paperwork with the fire marshal. And then there's the notices that have to be done, so there's mailing notices, and there's pre-blast surveys that have to be done, and I don't believe. Yeah, we haven't been contacted by, by them. So, so it's, my guess is they may at this point be waiting until the spring. It's entirely possible.
Okay.
No one else.
Approve the minutes of the November thirteenth. Town plan and zoning.
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the November thirteen, twenty twenty-four Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting?
Second.
All those in favor? I opposed. Meeting is adjourned.